All right, we're gonna get started. We are scheduled to be in here from 6:30 to 7:30, so about an hour worth of questions and information to you all. So you can be an informed voter when it comes to voting for your school board candidates. I have very crazy vision, so you will see me take my glasses on and off several times throughout tonight. Hopefully it does not distract. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Legal Women Voters, we'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. My name is Yvette Kell, and I will be the moderator tonight. I am here to ask the questions and keep things moving along. Before we introduce everybody and go over the ground rules, so that everybody is aware of the format that we do our candidate forums and that we manage our candidate forums. So understand that all the questions that we ask tonight have come from the public. I don't have a ton of questions that came ahead of time, so we have volunteers that you should have been able to get a card and a 3x5 card and a pencil when you came in. Would love more questions. If you write down a question, you raise your hand, and one of our lovely volunteers will get them from you and bring them up to me, and I will make sure that they get into the rotation. Again, we don't make up the questions. We're here as a tool for you all to ask your questions. The format this evening will be all of the candidates up here will have two minutes to provide an opening statement. We have a lovely timer here in the front. Barbara has a wonderful paddle that she will hopefully not use on the candidates, but will put up 30 seconds and then stop. So opening and closing statements are two minutes each, and then every candidate will answer every question. So there's not a question that is aimed at one candidate or another. The questions are for all candidates, and it's one minute per question. So that's the format that we go through. When Barbara puts up stop, I will usually let you finish your thought, as long as that thought is not a paragraph of a run-on sentence, then I will cut you off. And this is to provide fair and equal space for everyone to provide their information. I ask that the audience not applaud, whoop, provide verbal feedback during answers. We're here to hear the information and hopefully be able to walk away with some more ideas of what the candidates would bring to the table. I also ask that our candidates do not refer to one another. There's no cross-talk up here. We are here to hear your views on the questions, so providing us information about how you feel about a topic or the question, not necessarily how you feel somebody else might versus how you do. I do, as the moderator, will combine questions if they're similar and also reword them based on making sure that they are generalized and that they're for all candidates and not just one candidate. If we don't get to everyone's questions tonight, especially as we're going through and you hear something and you're like, "Oh, I have another question." If we don't get to your questions tonight, I strongly encourage you to come and speak with all of the candidates. I'm sure they would love to hear from you and ask your question on the one-on-one and hopefully get some more information that way. The League believes that this is the best way for voters to learn about people and seeking election and to hear them speak and answer questions in a civil, public forum. As we have all been made aware, in our world today, we have some divisiveness going on out there, and there's a lot of people that say that we can't have any civil discourse anymore, and the Legal Women Voters believes that we absolutely can, and these forums help us to be able to show that. And as communities come together, ask questions, and provide each other with some information, and have a civil conversation. So we want to make sure everybody's heard and that we get all the information that we can. So you will be voting for two candidates for the Board for the School Board for Melville, and we have four wonderful candidates up here. We will start this evening, opening remarks with Megan and make our way down. Every question after that, I will change who starts. So we'll go round robin. I may get lost in that, so please don't take offense if I miss somebody on the first one or we have to backtrack, okay? Feel free to keep me honest out there. And then for closing remarks, we'll start on the other end and then come back down. That way we have a different mix every single time. All right, so you have four candidates up here, and I am gonna show off my, hopefully show off my pronunciation skills. We have Megan Polly, Anne Zupfer, Serene Wilkinson, and Mick Johnson Jr. And we'd like to thank them for being candidates and for standing up and being willing to run for office. This is not easy to get up here, and it's awesome that they are willing to be a part of the community in this fashion. So now you can clap. This is the one side. All right, so at this time, we're gonna start with opening remarks. Ms. Polly, you are gonna start on your end in two minutes, and Barbara will have the timer in front of her, and she will let you know when it's at 30 seconds and when it's at stop. We ready to go?
Yep.
All right. Yep, I think it should be on, and if you two can use that one in the number.
Hi, everyone. As you know, my name is Megan Polly. A little bit about me, I grew up in the district and have been living here for the past 24 years and went to Beasley Elementary, Bernard Middle School, and Oakville High School, so I know what it is like to be a student in the district. My mom and sister are teachers. My mom is a teacher in the district, so I have insight on how I can advocate for our teachers because they truly do so much. I also have friends and past classmates who have kids in the district, and so one of my main priorities is really being student-focused and ensuring that all of our students are safe, have a positive mental well-being, and also focusing on their academics, ensuring that when they graduate, they are ready for college, trade schools, or whatever they decide to do. I also think that the Board has been doing amazing things these past years, and so I would love to join that team and keep making those positive impacts while collaborating with the administration, who I think is amazing. And also, as a first-time candidate, I know that if I were to get elected, there is a lot that I need to learn and train, so I'm here tonight knowing that I may not know all the answers to your questions, but I will sure find those for you. And professionally, I work in human resources, and so I deal with policies and procedures. Sorry, I just looked at the 30 seconds. Policies and procedures, data reports, budgets, and really just ensuring that I'm making ethical decisions in human resources. And at the end of the day, I am just someone from the community who wants to make a difference and do something bigger than myself, and this is really your district. You, as a community, get to decide how you want your district to be run. Thank you.
All right, I'll keep a close eye on that. Hi, thanks first to the call and to the Legal Women Voters for moderating tonight, the call for hosting us this evening. I'm Anne Zupfer. I'm running for a seat on the Melville School Board. I've been teaching and advocating in this district for 25-plus years. I want to continue that same advocacy on the Melville School Board and at the table because I believe, and I know the Board does too currently, that student success is the key to a strong school district, and the decisions that will be made and are made are in the best interest of the kids in this district. I'm retired, five years now. I taught kindergarten and first grade in the district in a number of different schools in the district and worked with students and their families in those first early learning years, which it's just my favorite place. Those are the kids who are learning how to read, they're learning how to get their thoughts down on paper, and that's key to then future success. Also, we have an incredible early childhood department, and that feeds directly into those early years, those K through 3 years. So we need to maintain that and grow, and it is growing, by the way. I would say exponentially, but it is growing quite quickly. I've advocated also for teachers. I've been an advocate in that sense as well. I was a representative for the NEA. I was a building rep, and I also sat on the negotiations team for about seven years, advocating for those teachers across the district as well. I value also all students, including students within the SSD, Special School District. I partnered, my husband and I, with SSD for a number of years. Our oldest son has an intellectual disability, and I know the strength of that partnership. I'm almost at stop. Lived in this community for about 40 years, and I want to continue that advocacy on the Board.
Okay, all right. Just wanna make sure the timekeeper is ready. Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Serene Wilkinson, and I have two children in the district. I also am on the PTO at my kid's elementary school, as well as participating in all the activities that they attend. My son is in Strings now at Berkeley, my oldest, and my other child is a fourth grader, so he has one more year at Forder. So what I've seen through my time here is a really great community. I went through an IEP process with my oldest son, and the amount of care and concern that the teachers at Forder showed my child was tremendous. Even though I am a therapist and I've advocated for children within IEP meetings myself as a social worker, you're still on the other side as a parent. So that was really, really rewarding for me to be a part of that and to be able to see the community that is here within the Forder. I also wanna say I'm a social worker, which I already kinda said, but I'm a licensed clinical social worker, so I've worked in many different areas in this region. I worked from North City, North County, South County. I've worked in Jefferson County. I've worked in Franklin County. I have a wide range of experience working with many families. I was a therapist for almost six years, working with children and treating them for behavior concerns, trauma, and right now I'm a program manager at my agency. We serve families that are young and have young children in the home. I also wanna say that I would provide representation for an underrepresented part of Melville. I live in 63125, so I live north of here, so I think it's important to understand that. While we represent everyone, I'm the only candidate today that represents that district.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mick Johnson Jr. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the call and the Legal Women Voters for having this event. Also wanna say Happy Women's History Month as well, and Back Tuesday, of course. I just wanted to say that, you know, it's an honor for me to be here. This is something that I've always dreamed of. My past experiences have been with campaigns, so I've worked for the President of the United States, I've worked for the governor twice, two state representatives, the mayor of St. Louis, and several initiatives as well. So, you know, I wanted to go into politics after that, but life happens. So I got married, we had a kid. It was during the 2008 recession, so there wasn't much available for me. So I started life without following my dream, but that's what you have to do as an parent. As a parent, you put yourself aside, and that's exactly what I've been doing. When we were expected to have a kid, we weren't living in this district, but we did a lot of research of where we wanted to go, and it was here, and we were welcomed with open arms. So even though I wasn't born here, I chose to live here and move here. My daughter's been through so many different schools with early childhood development. She started at Woolwind, then the Beasley, Trot Line, and now Rogers. So she's going through an IEP right now, and that's something I'm gonna get into a little bit more of the struggles we went through with IEPs and how I see that becoming better for the community. Things I've done within the community to earn your vote is I was on the Prop S Finance Committee, so we're pretty much divvying up the money that we had left after inflation during COVID, which we lost a lot of money due to inflation. Also, I was on for Prop E, and I'll go a little bit more into Prop E as well. I'm glad it passed, passed with flying colors. It's something I'm very proud of, to give money back to our teachers and administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for those opening statements. We're gonna move into questions, and we're gonna start with Ms. Zupfer. Again, one minute for each of the questions. What areas, school-specific, are you looking to improve MSD?
Improve and maintain, to me, are two words that go together very well. Continuing to improve our early childhood. We have made some, you know, that is one I will hang my head on quite frequently. Our early childhood program, we know research, it is research-based, that early childhood education provides a better base, as I said earlier, for kids in all grades throughout. So I would like to see more of full-day programs. We do have a pilot program that will be starting next year, but I would like to see that increase during our time, during my time on the Board, hopefully.
Thank you. Moving over to Ms. Wilkinson.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm in charge of the mic. Over this side, it's dangerous.
So areas across the district that I think we could improve on, while I think we do a great job with this according to the strategic plan, I think really focusing on improving mental well-being. 25% of our students are parent-reported or self-reported to have a mental well-being report, and so I do think that the school in the district can work on that and look at the different things that are happening within the school currently and figure out what they can do to modify that and support students as a whole.
Two things?
One, okay.
Just one? Have a listen. I would say the main, I actually agree with Anne about early childhood development. Since my daughter went through it, it was half-days, so it was from 9 till like 11:30, that she got some help with, you know, early childhood development, but, you know, when they get home, what do they do? They get on their iPads, you know, or on the computers, and that's not helping them socially at all. So I agree. I want to expand full-time access to early childhood development. I know we got that going on. Thank you very much for the Board for passing that two months ago for a full-time employee through Cary. I think that's really gonna make Melville School District stand out, so that's what I would say.
Thank you. One thing that I would like to see improved or just more involvement is maybe more from the community, specifically parents, because then that reaches across every one of our schools, so we know specifically what our parents want for our districts and the academics for their kids, and then specifically with our new strategic plan coming up with the next five years, it'll be important as we implement that.
All right. All right, this next question will start with Ms. Wilkinson, and the question is, what is the one item from your background that is your strongest aspect that you would bring to the Board?
I've been involved in working with families and children for over 20 years. I've been a clinical social worker since 2015, and I think that's my strongest asset. Social workers have a code of ethics we follow, and I take those very, very seriously, and I live my life through those ethics. And so, given all my experience with the way that I've supported children, not only from systemic levels, from a program management aspect, I've also dealt with DESI funding, different program, but dealt with DESI funding. And so I think my ability to understand and to take those components of individual, family, school system, larger system, state funding, combining that all together and really understanding what children and families need is my strongest aspect.
Thing I bring to the Board would be, for the last 15 years, I worked in the private sector as a sales consultant. So I work with businesses on their budgets, their goals, and then I give them my two cents of what to do with that money. This is like a business, you know? We have only a certain amount of money, a certain amount of budget, certain goals to hit, so I wanna make sure that we're fiscally responsible and not wasteful spending. Like, we see what's going on in the city right now, it's a disaster, and I don't wanna see anything like that happen, especially with administration changes in the federal level and Missouri level. Hopefully, we have a governor from St. Louis that's gonna help us out, more than us being on our own. So I would say my business acumen, bringing that to the table, make sure that we are spending the money where we promised, and it makes sense and it prioritizes as well.
If I had to pick one, I would do my professional experience. I work a lot with budgets, developing policies and procedures, really just connecting with different people, whether that has to do with performance reviews or just connecting on a friendly basis, doing a lot with diversity, equity, and inclusion, merit increases, and things like that, which I think affect this position on the Board.
Well, you might not be surprised to hear me say my teaching background. There is so much about that piece that I can bring to the Board and wear that hat in that role. Of course, the experiences that I've had, let's say, with curriculum, with advocacy, all of those pieces, but I think that personal, social piece of being in the classroom, having that experience that I can share when decisions come up on the Board and be able to say, "I have experience in that, I've done that before," or "this is what my colleagues might have talked about at that time." Keep in mind, I haven't been in the classroom for five years, but I still say "we" when I talk about the district. I still think of those people as my colleagues, and I feel that's something, a unique perspective I can bring.
Thank you. This next question will start with Mr. Johnson, and this is going to be all about money. So what is your view on the current financial state of the district, and what financial needs do you see the district needing over the next five to seven years?
Okay, I know through Prop E, we passed a tax increase, and so we do have an influx of money coming into our district, and I know, living down south, there is a lot of development going on, so there's a lot of residents, houses going up, subdivisions, and so that'll bring additional revenue to us. So I would say, you know, using that money properly, like we talked about with Prop E, and make sure it goes to the right areas. So other than that, you know, I do see some challenges with the growing number of students in our schools, especially, like I said, with the development. We're gonna have an influx of students in our schools, which I think is great, absolutely. People wanna be here, people wanna go to our schools. We starting to get a reputation of being the place to be. And I moved here in 2020, and the price of my house has gone up twice. It's because of a lot of things, but I think the school district and a lot of things that we passed has done a lot going towards that.
Yeah, so the 2024 budget was at break-even, and I think that the Board are good stewards of the community's money. I think it'll be important to focus on the federal and state changes to see how that could affect our budget as well, but I think it's important to just focus on what our students and staff need, and then, of course, all of our buildings over the next seven years, especially with Prop E.
Currently, our financial, we're in pretty good stead, let's say. I would like to see us, again, maintain that fiscal responsibility and also that transparency. If you go to a Board meeting, it is outlined very carefully by the CFO, Marshall Crutcher. He's letting us know exactly where things are being spent in relation to the props that we have passed. The one thing that I think is unfortunate in that is that we are considered, Melville is considered the best bang for your buck, and that is, it's not always a good thing. Our teachers and the people in this district do amazing things with the budget that we have, but we would like to see that increase. And again, like Megan said, we need to keep an eye on what's happening at the state and federal level, because we don't know what's going to happen at the state and federal level. So I think both of those things are important.
Thank you.
So I agree with most of the members up here. I think the Board has a strong financial stance, especially with the most recent passing of Prop E, also Prop S before that. I believe that, sort of, if you look at it like a ship, Prop E is like the wind pushing the ship forward, and we're repairing the ship as we're going forward. So I think that the Board is making great strides, and the momentum they have is excellent. Things that I would maybe think about how to improve, I mean, the schools still need continued infrastructure improvements, and then also I would wanna offer or think about figuring out how to offer with the Board and the superintendent together, how we can provide more classroom support and school staff support. What I mean by that is either interventionist, social workers, also support for the teachers. There's different ways that you can support the school without spending money.
Thank you very much. This next question's gonna be kind of a two, well, no, sorry, the following one will be a two-parter. This one's piggybacking off the first one. And we're gonna start back down on the other side here with Ms. Polly. If the district needed to make cuts to the budget, what would be the first thing that you think should be cut and why?
Ooh, that's a good one and a tough one. Oh, man, I don't know if I can give a specific answer now, just knowing that I really only know what has been in our Board meetings, but I know that I would not choose first anything that would affect our student academics, anything with that, or our teachers, or our buildings. So I might have to, whoever asked that question might have to come back to you on that one.
Wow. Nothing comes to mind, because we can't touch anything that would have to do with student improvement or student success, and everything that we do every day in this district has to do with that. I cannot, I can't answer this question right now. Again, that would be something that I would have to think of more carefully and more in-depth.
Thank you.
I think being here as a candidate, it's very hard to answer questions, as you can see, so I would really like to dive more deeper into what the district spends its money on before I can make a hard, fast decision about that. Also, there's lots of things that students do, as I'm realizing, that are really, really valuable. All the extracurricular activities, those are valuable. I went to a judge debate a couple weeks ago, and the commitment that the students and the teachers put into that, I mean, so there's just so many things that are so valuable that people might wanna cut first, so it's really, really hard for me to say what I would cut without seeing the budget in detail.
Okay, I was on the Prop S Finance Committee, and we had a lot of big dreams going into it, and unfortunately, COVID happened, and a lot of materials doubled the price, maybe more than that, so that really hurt our budget, so we had to cut then. So I think we already done our cuts, we're in a good place right now. Why cut some more when some things that we promised with Prop S... When some things that we promised with Prop S, we're not able to do because of inflation. So I would say, right now, I wouldn't cut anything, but, but see how this goes, and then if we need to, we can prioritize what's working and what is not.
Okay, last finance question for right now. We're going to start with Ms. Ferg. This has to do with capital projects or capital improvements for the district. If you had the funds that had to be allocated to a facility or a building in the district, where would you direct it? And how, and where would you direct it that you believe that it would have the most benefit for the district?
You know, I don't know where we are in the process, but I do know a couple of years ago, one of the things they were talking about was a rehaul of central office and moving that property. I don't know if that's something that's still in the works or not. We need to make sure, and I'm not positive about funding on this, but we have to make sure, one of the biggest things that happens all the time are roofs and HVAC and all of those things that make our buildings run every day. So those would be some of the things that I think that I would look at. But knowing that we have a number of buildings in the district that are older and, and historic, I think that that would be where we would need to start.
If we're looking district-wide, what I would probably think about would be looking at where the need is the greatest. So that could be a HVAC system and/or an entrance and/or tuck pointing. It's really expensive to tuck point, I'm not sure if there are any brick buildings, I think Forders brick. But things like that, looking at what really needs to be, what is most pressing, and then make the assessment after that about what is most needed, especially related to safety or function of, say, bathrooms. I know that my son's music class flooded, and so he came home and told me all about it, and everything was fine and all was all good. But like those sorts of things, what are the most pressing issues that we really need to think about and look at? And that's how I would make those responsible choices.
Thank you. Selfishly, I would put money into early childhood development, and I know we have, the hub is, was Beer Bomb has a new one, is that correct? Okay, so I would like to have a hub at more locations with full-time employees. So that would help develop our children, get them ready for school, get them away from electronics, have more interpersonal communication with each other, get to know the kids in the neighborhood, get to know the kids at school, play with them. Get that ready before you go into the, the state of a technology, when they're given a laptop or an iPad for school. It's, they have to learn these things to function in life. And, you know, like, for example, my daughter has a best friend who's never been to our house, and she's never been to our house because they talk online, it's, it's so odd, it is. And I mean, I, I used to be at my friend's house all the time, but not anymore, everything's through electronically. So if we can get those interpersonal communications started at early age, that's where I would put my finances in.
Well, my first thought would be, where's the need and make sure that the research is being done and get involved any stakeholders that need to. But the first thing that kind of pops into my mind without doing research is our transportation department, specifically those who, you know, handle all of our buses and things like that, just knowing that I, I don't even think they really have a, an office building, I think they're kind of in a trailer, so that's something to look into.
Perfectly fine. All right, Ms. Wilkinson's going to start with this next one, and it's a two-part question. Do, do you believe that federal funding should go towards vouchers and school choice, and what is your opinion on charter schools?
This is a hot topic right now. So I think that there are so many things coming through our legislature right now, in committee and going through the House, and then the Senate or vice versa. I think it's important to just keep tabs on that, and our advocacy committee does a really, really good, or our policy committee does a really good job with that. So I think federal funding, what was the federal funding for?
Federal funding for vouchers.
For vouchers. Yeah, so I think it really, we just need to wait and see. I think the, thinking about how that would take money away from the school is something that I would be very careful about, and I would advocate for our money, taxpayer money to stay here as much as we can, but state law is state law, so, you know, we have to see. Charter schools, I feel like they can be useful in some districts, especially failing districts. However, that takes money away from the public school district, which causes them to fail further. So as a parent, if you want to send your kid to one school and this one school is better, you know, it's, it's hard. But overall, I don't believe charter schools should be here in Melville.
I 100% agree. I went to private school, private high school, public middle school and grade school. And when I went to high school, we didn't get any money from the state, and we were just fine. We, we didn't expect it, you know, this is something that we had fundraisers for, and I don't think it's fair to privatize, make every school a private school by giving them money from our district to go elsewhere. Why would that money not be spent here? It's a waste of money, and it's frankly, I think it's insulting to us. So I know that, like I said, there's some changes in administration, there's a lot of smoke, there's smoke, there's fire, but we just got to wait and see what, what happens, and then, you know, and then go from there. It's, it's just, it's a tough topic, a topic that some people really, really believe in, but I don't think the majority does. And I just think people are just being loud about it, so that's my opinion.
Yeah, with everything with the federal funding, everything's so new with our change in government, so that's just something really to keep an eye on and kind of just adjust as needed. I think it's really important, like I mentioned earlier, to really hear what the community wants, so before making any decisions, I would want to hear from you all. Also, with charter schools, my understanding, we don't have any now in the district, and so I think I would like to keep things that way, as well as school choice, just really hearing from the community before making any of those tough decisions, because my, these topics are tough, and I know a lot of people have different opinions when it comes to these.
I, I do not, I do not believe that federal or state funding should go to charter schools or to be used in a voucher sense. I had a real good analogy a couple of years ago explain to me that when you're funding charter schools, it's like building two interstate seventies next to each other. One, of course, though, does not have any local control, or any, or a school board, or anything that would provide parameters for that district. Also, the, the money is, it is directed away from public schools. Many times, there was just an article today in the Post about Kairos, a charter school in the city, and right now, they do not have the, well, they don't have teachers, but they don't have the resources right now to support their children who have IEPs, and many of those children are going without the, the legal piece of their IEP right now. They'll, well, okay, that's it.
I appreciate when you police yourselves, makes it a lot easier on me, I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to start down at the end with Mr. Johnson on this one, and I am combining a couple of different questions. These are all have to do with DEI and our current climate of, if DEI becomes illegal, how do we make sure students stay included? Specifically, 504 and IEP protections and, and money may be removed. How will you continue, what are your opinions of 504 and IEP protections? And how the district may best serve the students who are benefiting from these plans?
Great question. Want to say that my, my daughter is in an IEP right now. She started in kindergarten with a, a great plan that was specific to her learning disability. We, she was diagnosed with ADHD, speech apaxia and autism. And so that's a lot, you know, as for a parent, it's very, very difficult to maneuver that, especially when you don't have the training, so she had IEP until, up until COVID, and she lost it. For some reason, they pulled it from her, which didn't make any sense, we were very, very disappointed and angry. There was a lot of sleepless nights because of it, because she lost it for two years, and she struggled for two years and lost two years of health. She finally got it back in fourth grade, and now she's excelling. I want IEPs to be available for everybody, everybody who deserves it. It should not be difficult, it's difficult to get IEPs for our students.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
The Melville School District focuses on equity, so focusing on individual student needs, which one of those are IEPs, which I think are so important, and whatever that the student needs, I think it's so important. And sorry, I kind of forgot the rest of the question, but.
504 IEP protections, if money were removed, how do you make sure people still, or students still feel included and taken care of?
Yeah. Well, without IEPs, that's, I don't even know how that would look, that has a lot of, you know, that's kind of hard to answer right now, which I hope that it wouldn't. That kind of goes along with just all the training and knowledge that you get from being on the board, and just kind of seeing what happens and adapting to those things.
So when, when I'm asked about DEI, I first like to take it out of that context. It is not a word in itself, it is an acronym, it is not a noun. DEI talks about diversity, equity and inclusion, all very important in each of those separate headings. How we would do it without, I think those are questions that can't be answered when we're looking at how this might affect students, teachers, school districts federally and at the state level. I will say 504s and IEPs are legal documents, and how we, how that might be shifted, and if that would be something that has to come to, it would have to come to the board, because I know there would have to be policy in that. I think we also need to talk about how that might look in a classroom or with the support staff. We have an incredible partnership with Special School District. What will happen if some of these very things are taken away? Our, our district, I know, will service these kiddos in the best way they can, they'll find a way.
So I look at diversity, equity, inclusion, very similar to Ann, in that it's split up into three different definitions. So thinking about my son and his IEP, he, it's a very structured process, they do testing, they do discovery phase, and they go in and they say, okay, where is this testing compared to where he is? And so they say, okay, well, he has this many points disparaging between his testing and then his, wherever he needs to be. So I look at that in equity, he's given a couple of tools, thirty minutes a day, he doesn't have a lot of time in his IEP, but he's given the extra tools to sort of bump him up a little bit, kind of help him a little bit more, get better at what he needs to do and submit his projects. So I believe that our school, school board will follow the law where the law lies, and if something changes, we'll have to see. But I think together, we're going to work to support our students, because that's what's most important.
Okay, I'm looking at time, and I want to give us time for closing remarks and everything. So I'm going to ask a couple of yes/no questions, just to pop us through, or very short answer questions, so numbers, to try to get as many, because I think that DEI could also have been a second question along with it, we're definitely, we're definitely low on time. So we are going to start back down here with Ms. Polly. How many of our schools have you visited that included speaking with principals about their needs and challenges?
I've been, since I've been a candidate in this, I've been trying to go to as many PTO meetings and speaking to the principals. Oh, gosh, off the top of my head, I think I've been to seven, and I, I still have some going to next month. So really trying to meet with everyone in here at your school.
I'm trying to do the math in my head. I've been in a variety of different schools in the, in the district, one as, you know, in first place as a teacher. I have spoken probably, I will say right now, to four, perhaps five principals in the district. But, you know, that's just the, I, you know, that's just the tip of the iceberg we know in this district. I would say probably within the buildings, seven to eight.
So I've been to about seven buildings so far, I have about five to seven more meetings in the next month or so. I also have gone to Melville High School and Oakville High School for other separate events. And concerning the principals, if I see them at the school and I have an opportunity to talk with them, I do, I have not called them separately. I just didn't want them to feel put on the spot by a board member calling them. I do know, of course, Dr. Moss, and she's lovely, although I haven't really talked to her about this, just announced it. I definitely want to make sure that I keep things separate. Sorry, I'm supposed to be short.
My answer is not enough, I have a lot more to do. I have a plan on making appearances at most of these schools. My, my daughter's been to five schools, I know all the principals from there, because she's a ham, and she, they loved her, so they, I got to know them really quick. I was actually talked into running for school board by one of the principals, so. So I, I know quite a few, but there's so many I need to hit, and hit a diverse group, that I'm just looking forward to, to doing that. But I do have a website if anybody has a specific question about my stance on anything. But right now, I probably have ten to fifteen, it's crazy this next month, so that's my answer.
Okay, we're going to ask two more questions, and then we're going to end with closing remarks. I'm going to combine two questions, and hopefully it can be a yes/no, but please feel free to elaborate if you need to. If school board elections were in November and they were a four-year term, would you still run for the board? And do you see the board as a stepping stone to other political positions, or do you plan to stay? And we're going to start.
Well, I can't answer yes/no on that, I'm not afraid of November. I'm not positive, though, that school board elections have a place in November. This, this is not a stepping stone for me, this is something I feel I've been put in place for, so I'm here for the long haul.
I, that's an odd question, is it because more people vote in November? If that's the case, I mean, yeah, it's good, it's good, let's see more voters and see what they really think about candidates. So yes, that doesn't really affect me. Four years, yes, four years is, is fine with me, it's just one more year than, than I would have with this term. And stepping stone, no, I look at this as an experience to fulfill my ability to utilize the skills that I have to help others.
I think if it was, for, the election was last November, for example, I, I thought it would be a disaster for this to be on the ballot, because it would get lost, absolutely lost, and the focus of our voters and constituents would be more to, more towards federal or And the focus of our voters and our constituents would be more toward, more towards federal or statewide. So I do appreciate it, you know, being in April where we can have more focus on local elections. And we wouldn't have this right here if this was in November. Nobody would have interest in it. So this turnout here is great tonight. It's because of, you know, the timing of everything. And like I said, timing is everything as well. Is it a stepping stone for me? Yes, it is. It would be a stepping stone. I'm taking Peggy's job once I get elected. No, no, this is, this is my main focus right now. I've built some equity in the neighbor, in, in the community by working on the propositions as well. And this is a stepping stone, the propositions being on those committees, a stepping stone to this position.
I agree with everything that they said, but I would, I would sign up no matter when this is because at the end of the day, I've really signed up for this to be student-staff focused and to get back to my community. So whenever that timeline is, I'll do it. And this is not a stepping stone for me. I do not see politics in my future.
Okay, so we have the last, the last formal question, and we'll do closing remarks. And again, if I didn't get to your questions, please feel free to reach out to the candidates individually, go to their websites and get those questions answered. We're going to start with Ms. Wilkinson this time. How should Melville School District deal with the rapidly growing student population, especially at the high school level?
I think that we should take each year in stride, figure out what we need to do, budget, look at trends. Birth rates are actually down across the nation. I just heard it the other day. So I think really just taking in the data that is present and utilizing the knowledge that we have within the board and within our administration and within the community members that know the district and demographic data and housing sales, I'm sure there's a bunch of things that go into that. And so making sure we're looking at that and then figuring that out and what we need to help and support the school. We've expanded some schools. AirBombs had a large expansion. So I do think that there are things that we have in place. The district used to have more students enrolled. So I do think we'd have to think about different things with cost of teachers and things like that. But I think we just need to take that in stride and figure out what we're going to do each year.
Yeah, I think with the passing of the, these propositions, we have more money coming into the district. So this allows us to hire more teachers and keep our quality teachers as well. So the better, better way we retain our teachers, the more teachers we get, the easier it will be on this sort of transition into higher, higher attendance in, in our high schools as well. Now, expanding the buildings, we saw what Lindbergh did, that's not going to happen here, you know? But, but what I wanted to see is us use that money in a responsible way. You know, our needs are going to change. I mean, we have this influx of money, but whatever is important right now may not be important in two years, three years. So we got to constantly re-evolve and reanalyze where we need to be when it comes to our funding and what was most important at this time, and acknowledge trends that are coming up.
Thank you.
I think it's important to be proactive rather than reactive in this case and really, like they mentioned, to focus on those forecasts and trends and really look at the demographics and our school boundaries. And if there's already changes, to continue being transparent with our communities for...
And I'm going to give you some food for thought as you gather your thoughts for your closing remarks. Couple of questions that we didn't get to had to deal with removing books from schools or specific books from Melville schools. Are there any books that you look, would like to remove? And then your opinion on efforts of having bibles in the classroom and replacing counselors with chaplains and prayer in school, if you'd like to include those. And also just what changes you'd like to see in the district your first year if you were elected? Those are very vastly different things. Feel free to include what you would like and what you feel needs to be. Or weigh in a little bit more on the DEI question because we didn't really dig into that one all that much. But again, please feel free to talk to your candidates one-on-one if you don't feel like you got that full scope of the information. And remember to vote. If you need more information, you can go to 411.org. The, the election is, I think I have last year's date down here. I have last year's date, April 4th, but it's April 8th. So remember that, April 8th. Now I'm going to have it stuck in my head. I live in the city and today's primary day, so that's the date I've been thinking about. But very much appreciate you all coming out tonight. This was a great show. And at this point, we're going to start at Mr. Johnson's side and work our way back down to the other side. Two minutes.
Two minutes.
I know you brought up about banning books. I just want to say that the book 1984 changed my life. And that's something I read in high school. So I wouldn't want to see anything like critical thinking be taken out of our library. So I didn't even think I'd like it, but it opened my eyes and it's still relevant today, so. Either way, I just want to say, like I said, we moved here 12 years ago because of our school district and the quality of it and what we saw, what we visited. We're going to stay here. We're very, very happy with how things are going. I know that with my daughter's issues, that she's not easy to deal with. But we have amazing, amazing teachers out there through SSD and through our school district that has helped her out. And so it's eye-opening how, how amazing work, the amazing work they do for us. I decided to run because I could have ran last time. You know, I was encouraged to do so, but I didn't, I didn't have equity in this community. I didn't, you know? So I thought it was great for me to get out there, work for Proposition S, work for Proposition E, get out there, know the community leaders, our, our political leaders, our board. Get out there and meet them and show them that I, I do care about this community and I want to see the best for them as well. And then, you know, I want to see us get better at early childhood development. It's coming. It is coming. I just want to get that momentum going. I don't want anybody at state level pulling this from us. This is something that we earned locally. They gave us zero money. We had to do it ourselves locally. And they're sitting on a big surplus right now, and that money's not going to us. So I will fight for this community. Please, please consider me for school board and help me continue what I started with, with Proposition E, to make sure we use those funds for the proper things for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's been nice to see all your faces and some of you guys I recognize and some I, you don't. If you want to know more about me, I have a website. There's also some flyers back on the bar with the QR code that links directly to my website. So please feel free to look at the content there. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and ask me. I'm open to having any conversations that you would like and to ask me any other more detailed questions on my views. Overall, I feel like this is a good fit for a social worker, an advocate, a teacher, cheerleader, person who has worked within the region while also I'm a parent. I've seen the incredible work that the school district has done, and I want to continue to support that. Also, as a parent, I'm there with you when I, we had a change to Infinite Campus and when we had to have emails from this teacher and then Parent Square from that teacher. So I do feel like I understand and really can relate in a deep, deep way. And my oldest is a sixth grader, so I'm excited for high school. High school is one of my favorite places to be, and I really enjoy it. And I'm looking forward to supporting my children through that time, as well as, if elected, hopefully be able to support and advocate for your children as well.
Just again, thank you to the League tonight and to the call for providing this opportunity for the community, excuse me, to weigh in and listen to what we have to say. I've had a chance, along with everybody else, to kind of outline what I would do on a seat or in a seat on the board. The platforms that we have shared tonight help the community learn more about us and know who they want to vote for, and that's an important piece. I feel, again, that my background uniquely qualifies me in many areas. I want to, a couple of things that I really want to focus on, building the success of our early childhood programs. My degree is three years old through third grade, so those are very important pieces for me. I'd love to work toward lower class sizes, but I know that costs money. I'd love to look at moving closer to desirable class size and compare to standard class size per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That would be incredible. It could, it could happen, but it's kind of way out there, but I'd love to see that happen. And just maintain that fiscal transparency and responsibility that we have had to date. That is something I think that we are very fortunate to have in the district. We currently have an incredibly strong board, and they always make decisions that are student-based. When I say it is about the students, I, I mean it 100%. I think about the kindergartners and first graders who walk through my door every year. And when I make decisions, I can unequivocally say that those are the kids that I will always be thinking about in addition to our future generations in this district. I would appreciate your support and vote on April 8th.
I'm going to keep my closing short and sweet. When you hear my name or think of me, I really want you to think student and staff-focused and that I want to hear from you as a community on how you want your district to be ran. I think that's really important when making these decisions. I also, if anyone has questions, would love to meet with you after, to ask more questions if you have any. I also do have a Facebook for my platform that if you want to reach out, feel free to do that as well. But then also, just want to thank the call and the League of Women's Voters for hosting tonight, and it was great to meet you all, so thank you so much.
That's okay. We can not ignore that. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your questions, and thank you for coming tonight. And please be safe going home.